Welcome, everyone. This is our staff meeting of the Hamilton County Commission, February 11, 2025. Let's introduce ourselves on the dais. We'll start with you, Kristi.
Kristi Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hury, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Alicia Reese, Hamilton County Commissioner.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
Thank you very much. We have one item on our agenda. We had two, but the presenter for the second item is sick, and so we are going to bump that to another day. And so we are going to be talking about the digital permitting migration in Hamilton County. I really think this is a big deal for our residents to make the function that James will talk about easier for folks, and they don't have to come down to this building, they don't have to find a parking spot, all the things that we hear people talk about that are frustrating. So James Noiz is here, Mike Stalen is here, and so they're going to present this and help us, I think, move here into the 21st century, right, when it comes to our permitting process. So Commissioners, we're ready to move forward. Okay, we've got a PowerPoint, so welcome, James.
Good morning. And please let me know if I'm not loud enough. So thank you very much. I am super excited to be here today. This has been a process, a bit in the making, but one which is a transformative process for our customers. So we're very much looking forward to this, and again, very excited to be here today. So I have a presentation. If we could get that up on the board, thank you very much. All right. Again, I'm James Noiz. I'm Director of Plan and Development. We handle a lot of the development processes here for the county and plan and development, being planning and zoning, stormwater, and also the building side of things. So from there, subdivisions as well. So I'll get into that in a second. Firstly, digital permitting is here for the county, for those processes. From our standpoint, that is a huge change. It's one where that our customers don't have to come down here anymore. It's virtual. Everything will be online for those processes. This is developed in partnership with CAGES, which is the Cincinnati Area Geographic Information System. They are a consortium, a consortium which is a city-county governed consortium, which was developed with a lot of foresight by the city and the county. It was developed with the intent of making sure that we had a shared geographic information system. That's the mapping system as of such, and it takes, it's a digital mapping system, where you have all these layers of information on there, and there are hundreds of layers with information that include everything from topography, photography, you know, essentially your streams, your streets, all your infrastructure. Now, that's safely behind a wall where, you know, people can't look at that information, some of that, but there's a public side of it that they can use and utilize. We use that. In fact, CAGES developed a system of permitting based upon that geographic information system, which was called Permits Plus. All right, that system is 35 years old. It's served us very well, but it's time to retire that system. All right. And we're not putting it out, you know, from that standpoint to, you know, it's still working from there, but we'll use that only as a read-only system. We are moving into a new age where we have digital permitting. The new EZ Trac system is a system which our customers can access anywhere. They have a remote capability of internet access, so they can be out wherever it is that they are, home or in their office, or on an island, or in the mountains, as long as they have access. So when is this happening? This is happening next Tuesday. Got the date up there, February the 18th. That's a Tuesday. We'll be migrating our data over from that standpoint, from the old Permits Plus system into the new EZ Trac system. So we will be the first county organizations to move over to this, and we're not the only ones that are going to be moving over this, but we are the first from the county side. The city currently has the elevators over, but we will be the first large department which will be moving over, and it has taken a bit to get to that point. We have very many processes to make sure that we've got right. We've gotten to that point, and we are ready to unveil this next week. But I'm going to do a preview today. Mike is going to provide a brief overview of the site, which will be, you know, it's not public yet, but from that standpoint, it will be on Tuesday, showing you how you can access the system. So what have we, from that standpoint, you know, we had to do a bit of, you know, work with our partners and with our customers to make sure that they were aware of this process. And from that standpoint, we wanted to make sure we got out. We've communicated and worked with through demos, presentations, keeping them informed, and testing. We've worked with the, with MSD, GCWW, that's very Cincinnati Water Works, for folks out listening, Hamilton County Public Health, Hamilton County Engineers' Office, and IBI. We've also worked with the Home Builders Association, the American Institute of Architects, the local Greater Cincinnati Chapter, and the Allied Construction Industry, who is our contractors and developers out there. So we've also, again, worked with our townships, letting them know what's going on, and also our contracted municipalities, again, by holding demos with them, open houses, so that they know what's going on. We also published this on our website that this is coming. Who's next in this process? So beyond that, I also want to say that, you know, we won't be the first. Again, this is a process for the overall county, for the county residents, so that includes IBI, who will be coming on within the year or so, with their processes, city buildings, city and county health departments, MSD, GCWW, and the Engineers' Office and DOT from the city. Those are all planned, working through the CAGES Consortium, to come alive with digital permitting. So we actually get to be one of the first people out there. So again, exciting. Right. Again, the first to go paperless on the, on February 18th, the Plan and Development Department's Building Inspections Division, Plan Development, Development Services, which is zoning and subdivisions, Plan and Development's Stormwater Infrastructure, and also the Conservation District's Earthworks area. So, very simple. The website is on the bottom here. There's a easy link to that. What you're looking at on the screen there is what you would look, what would you would go to currently. The, that's your EZ Trac homepage. And so from there, and again, Mike will show you through that. Again, the permits which will be going digital, building permits, earthwork permits, floodplain permits, stormwater, subdivision, and zoning. So what you'll be able to do with this, again, it's a web-based system, meaning that you can access the site anywhere. We'll have online payment capabilities with our provider, Point and Pay. It goes through a third-party system there. It goes outside of us. We don't hold up any money or anything like that. We don't touch it. From that point, you can pay just as you can right now through a credit card or debit card as of such, or you can do by an e-check, or, or we still have an office that's open here. If you want to mail in a check, you want to come down and give us a check, or if you want to pay in cash. Obviously, we can't pay on cash online, but you're going to have to come downtown to be able to do that. So we want to be able to serve our customer fully and all the available options for them. It's obviously an efficient system. You can, you can drive this yourself, essentially that, you know, you're notified all along the way, from that standpoint. You are told that, hey, you have a, your permit needs some action. From that standpoint, you need to submit revisions and so forth. There's an email notification process. This is a fully automated system. You submit the plans online, you submit your, submit your application. You initially have to create an account to do so. That way that we can attach plans with your account. We don't want, you know, folks to be able to, from the public, to be able to go in and submit documents for somebody else, and that's why you have to create an account for that. But it's a fairly simple process and go online, and you can have multiple permits under one account. Again, you have a project status tracking that's in there that essentially allows you to see where all your projects. Maybe you have 10 projects in there. You're a construction company, or a home builder, and you want to see where your various projects are. You go into your account, and you select which one, and you can see where you're at at any point in that time. Again, this is a collaborative process with our partners. During the development and construction process, we rely on our other partners, essentially zoning, water works. We have sewer systems, obviously, to work with, fire departments that we work with as well. We get that information and make sure that all of that, the approvals are in place to make sure that we issue a coordinated approval. So also, one of the cool things is, you'll see up there, there's your phone. You know, you'll be able to schedule inspections online through your phone. So from that point, one of the first things that I heard when I came here was, hey, why can't we use our phones to do this? We can do everything else on our phones, and why can't we do this? So you can do a lot of things with this, as long as you have an internet connection. So we understand that our customers, you know, we have a varying degree of customers. You know, mom and pop, first time in, only time in, to very savvy and technical architects who know everything they've been through other processes where it's digital. We're here to help all of them, and in ways where we have online help. We have, you know, there's, here's, again, you scroll down on the, on our EZ Trac page, and you'll have an overview and information during the whole process. You have help screens to be able to help you through that process. So those are online to folks during business hours. We're going to be here to help. And we know we're going to have to, that first couple of days into the first month or so, there'll be a lot of questions, because it's different. Anytime there's change, it's, it's for anyone, you have to acclimatize to it and help customers through that process. So we're here to help them. We're also providing a couple of terminals down. We know people, you know, maybe they're uncomfortable working in that environment. Come on down. You know, from that point, we will help you through that process, and to make sure that it isn't something that's scary or difficult to do, we're here to help. So those are the things we're trying to help folks out. Again, we've tried to get this out into the community, this that we work with, to make sure that their customers are aware of that. All right. And before we get to questions, I'm going to have Mike do a little demo here from that standpoint, to show us the new system. Again, this is the new EZ Trac permitting system, which will be live next Tuesday. We have a couple of migrations to go through to get to that point, meaning we got to take data from a couple of different environments and put them in that. So assuming everything goes right, I have to say with a caveat that, you know, if something doesn't go right, we'll make sure that we announce that to folks that, you know, there's a change, you know, from that standpoint. But with everything, you know, keeping our fingers crossed, and everything should go right, we've had a couple of migrations so far, being successful, that, you know, on the 18th, we should be okay. One thing I will have to say is that we will not be accepting permits on Friday, any permit applications under the old system. We have to, have to have some cutoff. If there are folks that are coming in, they can meet with us. If there are folks that are coming in, they can meet with us and so forth, but we can't accept paper on Friday. So, Mike, do you, we're still working on the...
Sorry. I was in and then... I got to sit up so it should go on.
While Mike's doing that, is there any questions that I can answer that were...
So I just wanted to highlight something you said to make sure that it's accurate from my interpretation. So people can get online and access these services, which I think is really great. I think, I really do think it's a great step by way of customer service and responding to the needs of constituents, but if people are not comfortable going online, they can come down as they always have to get permits or zoning or whatever it is. So you can do it either way. Is that what you said?
That is correct. We'll have two terminals. We still have four customer service technicians from that point. We also will be able to help them out at the terminals through that process. So what we used to do is take, you filled out a permit, an application, and then you gave it over to our permit techs, and they would enter it in the computer. This is sort of a self-serve process, but we'll help you through that. It's not like that you will say, go over to that place over there, and we're not here to help you. We will help you through that whole process, and essentially we...
I'm most concerned about some of the older mom and pop kind of situations where they might not be comfortable transitioning to an online. Most people, I think, would be, but others maybe not, and so just want to make sure that you've thought through that piece.
And we have. I mean, you know, what we will do is, if somebody has difficulty with the keyboards and so forth, and entering that information, we'll be there to help enter them, enter the information in with them, so they can say, hey, can you provide your name and that type of thing? And if it comes to that, we will physically type in for them that information. We're here to help. You know, we know that there's all kinds of folks out there, and then from that point, we're not going to leave anybody out of this process.
Thank you. Just wanted to verify that. I know you had said, I just want to put a finer point on it. Commissioner Somerud, oh, wait a minute.
I just wanted to let you know what we're doing.
All right. Should, do we want to ask, I mean, up to you all, do you want to ask questions or get the...
I want to not ask the question, but make my comment and I'll be doing...
Okay. All right. Why don't we go ahead with the presentation?
Oh, I want to make my...
Oh, you want to make your comment? Oh, I apologize. Go ahead. Yep.
Hi, James. Thank you for your presentation. I know recently we increased our permit fee. Do we, the increase went for all fees, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can I get a list of what the permit fees are for individual projects? You have a list?
I don't have it here. It is actually, yeah, I can most definitely, it's, yeah, it's on, they're all on our website right now, and, yeah, it's easy. We want to make sure that we publish that for our residents. So, yeah, I'll get you those, all of those.
I figured it was on your website, but I knew that you could get it to me also. So on Friday, you said you're not available. Is that because you're processing all the permits that were put in during the week to be able to do that?
That is correct. There's a bit of delay in getting those, and you can imagine all the permits that we get, and so from there, we have paper. We can't, you know, take in, we have to sort of cut off that date, and so, but if everybody came in, they wanted to meet with us, talk about the process and so forth, we're still going to be open. We just can't accept that permit. Correct.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for this. What I like about it, it provides options for people, and I'm glad you're not just throwing away the other option, because we have some people who have been doing this and may not be, we have a variety of people who have to get permits, if you will. You have some that's, you know, big companies, and you've got mom and pop, so I think it makes it easier. Some do pay cash. I'm glad you did not get rid of the cash option. And then, of course, there's a lot of folks that say, why can't I just hit the button instead of having to driving all the way downtown and parking? So I think it gives options. My, my other piece, though, is marketing. I'm always looking at, not just marketing what we're doing, but having it in some kind of one portal type of thing. I think we've done a great job. 5-1-3 relief, people understand it. You say, go there, and you can hit, you know, it has exactly what you can hit, and I think, I don't know, our first time opening the portal, first year, I guess it was a couple hundred thousand people had accessed it, had accessed it. But we were also able to get a report, this many people, and this is what they were looking for. So just wanted to put that on the radar, Jeff, because when I came here, our website is very difficult to navigate, and it wasn't, you know, we couldn't navigate it on a smartphone. So I know we have these different components, but I don't want them to be just silos separated from Hamilton County. So if there's some kind of way, and I think we're revamping, I think we're supposed to be revamping our website or what have you, but I would love to have this one portal, and then we're able to run reports on a monthly basis, or, you know, we could say, these are the people, what they need. Here's what they're using, and then if we're out, if somebody says, hey, you know, how do I get my permit? I want to be able to give them something just real easy and be able to say it for whatever it is, and they can navigate it. So I think the portal that you're going to show us is very good, but I want to make sure that interfacing is interfaced with something that's Hamilton County, and then it might say, you know, go to this section, and it might take you to a different portal, but at least, you know, we can easily say, go here.
Yep.
It has everything you need, so.
Totally with you, and understand that, yeah, we've, so my department is highly involved in that website process. Again, the, the date, I believe that we go to that new website is supposed to be March 1st from there, and I know they're working very diligently to make sure that happens. So the county website is supposed to shift at that point with some great features, again, optimized for the mobile phones and so forth. And so from this point, this definitely will be able to, you know, go from one portal to the other. This is really cool, because, again, as I mentioned, the city is involved, that's the entire county. So you go to this EZ Trac system, you're going to be able to do all of those departments I talked about. Again, city and county building departments will be on the same place. And so from that point, you can go from our site over to their, to the CAGES site, and that's where you can do those things. Currently, it lists one function that you can do. As of Tuesday, it lists all of our functions that we do, and then from that point, as they expand, as those various departments and agencies add to that city-county, you'll be able to do those there. So we'll have that new website to go to, from that portal, to go to this one, and so we can put it on that website. And I, it has to be there. It has to be there for our customers. So definitely, you're on the right page. That's what we want to do, and we'll get it there.
Thank you. I think this is phenomenal, and I like what you said, city and county, but like, the city is in the county, so that's what the site is going to allow you to do. So I just, just, this is great. Thank you.
We're partners. Our, you know, our builders, our contractors, they work in both areas. So we want to be able to have a unified service, and CAGES has done a great job of being able to put this together and work with us. So without further ado, I'll move it over to Mike, who's diligently over there waiting for me to get started on his presentation.
Thank you. As James said, this is the starting point. From here, this is the, this is public now, but right now, you can't do too much on it.
Leslie, is this mic on?
Oh. Is my mic on? Sorry.
There it is.
This is the site now. It's live.
Can you scroll down there just to kind of show? There's your tour, essentially, the overview, how you would create an account. You want to start an application. Again, currently, those are the applications that you can do. They're all city-based right now, some small ones from there.
Yeah, these are all minor services that are available now that are in the city. This is, can be the first one to be with the county. What I'm going to show you next is the testing environment, which will go live on Tuesday, which will, you'll get to from this website starting Tuesday. This is what you'll see when you log in. You come into a, you create a free account, and then once you create that, you sign in. And this yellow won't be there, obviously. That's warning you that this is a test. And what you'll be presented with is a map. And in this map, you can type in an address, or you can search on the map and just, well, first, since I've been testing this, I have a lot of sample applications here, but a person coming in for the first time would go here new, create a new application, and then they're presented with a map. Now you can type in an address, or you can browse this map. Here we have the whole county. And say I want, I was up here, right in the corner of the county, next to Indiana and Hamilton Butler County. Pick this person way out there who doesn't want to drive downtown. They want to get a permit to put a pool in or something. They type that. Here are the, here are the services that are available to that address. A zoning certificate, earthwork permit, or a building permit. So I'll show you, if they wanted to get a building permit, they would click here, and they would choose, is this commercial, or is this something to do with a single-family house? So in this example, I would... And then, then we, this, you're in our department at this point, so these are all the permits that you could ask for at a single-family house. You could ask for an accessory structure addition, alteration, new house, repair, swimming pool, demolition, all these things, furnace replacements, reroofs, home care is like at-home daycare, things like that. So if, you know, I don't know if I want to go too deep into this, because once I go further in, ask for lots of information, you don't want to watch me typing in a lot of information, probably. But basically, it's a tree, and you, as you make the choices, residential commercials, you know, what you're doing, and then it starts asking you questions, and eventually end up with, you got an application for a permit, and there's a certain point where you can upload some documents, and it's very simple, you drag and drop them. When you submit the documents, and this, this type of information populates automatically, the owner of the property populates automatically, so, and the person would just proceed, they name the project, whatever they want. And then we start asking questions like, oh, well, you list, who the contact's going to be, stuff like that. And basically, you're going to go through all these steps here, these information, contact information, project information, upload the documents, then you get a chance to review, and then you hit submit. And then it comes back to our office, and we review the information, and then we route it to all our partner agencies who need to, and the routing is completely customized to each type of permit.
So one of the things I'd like to point out there is Mike selected in Harrison Township. That's an area where we do zoning. If you selected Coleraine Township, we don't do the zoning, so you couldn't apply for a zoning certificate where we don't have jurisdictional authority. So in that case, if you were in the city of Cincinnati, and you went to select, you know, from building, an address there, you couldn't, you can't submit in, in not our jurisdiction. So again, working in different jurisdictions, we work with different fire departments, we work with 10 different municipalities on the building side alone. We don't do all the townships for zoning. It's hard to keep track of all that stuff, even internally, we have a difficulty sometimes, right? And when we add new communities, if the community wants to come forward and join us, and I have had some interest on that side of things, once they are added through CAGES, again, through the geographic information system, it just gets dropped in there, and from that standpoint, you would be able to select that if you were in one of those new communities. So again, you can't select for one that you can't submit for. All right? So you're in, again, you're in Delhi Township, and you try to get a zoning certificate. Well, you got to go to Delhi Township for that. So that helps in that regard. It, we do get a lot of folks who come down here, and we have to tell them, no, you have to go back out there.
The other thing I was just going to point out real quick, even if you don't log in, you can go to that website, and you can search records, and you can start by address or by the map. So here, if I put in the address we're at right now, you can see these are all the records that are active or closed or open at this permit. There's been some code enforcement here. We'll have to check on that. But this is county-wide, and this is, this information's available now, if you're not aware. And, but as of Tuesday, we'll be on here too, and you can make your applications.
So.
So we don't lose track of this, but James, a good point about the fact that it would just be very confusing for someone to try to go through a process when we don't have that jurisdiction. But if, let's say they were in Coleraine Township, they tried to submit a zoning application, will it pop up and say the zoning, where, who the zoning...
We'll give you that choice.
Great.
So we may get a call saying, I'm trying to submit a zoning certificate. We'd say, well, it's because that's, you're not, we don't have jurisdiction over that zoning area, so.
You just didn't know if the system will give them that information, that the zoning administrator or the zoning jurisdiction in Coleraine Township is the township of Coleraine at this address or something, or this telephone number or something like that?
Mike, does it do that?
Not exactly.
Okay.
Maybe something to think about as we, as we keep going, as we move forward on it.
That's a great point.
Yeah. Because I think the existing system, if you go into CAGES and you look at it, it will tell you the address of the zoning from there, based on the property, on the property report. So I tell you what, let me get back to you from there on what that shows from there. So I want to get back to one of the things that Commissioner Reese said about reports and everything like that. There are, it seems to be an infinite opportunity to create reports from here, from that point in the system. Again, this is, it's geographic information system, there are points on a map. So from that point, we are just getting a hold of and understanding those processes of all those reports. You have to create them, and there is a sort of programming to that. So I think there's going to be a lot of opportunity to find out additional information, you know, from that standpoint. I create a lot of reports myself. You know, I download to information, how many permits we have and so forth, and I map those out over time. But, you know, it, it'd be a lot more robust if we had a system and report, we could just push a button, and it generates it. So I have seen some that do that, and so I'm excited about that opportunity, so I don't have to sit there manually and enter all this information. So it's definitely capable of that, and so as we figure out those capabilities, firstly, and most importantly, is getting the system up and operational for our customers.
Yeah, I just want to follow up quickly on it, because I had the same question Jeff did. So if, the last thing we want is somebody to go into a system that's more efficient and keeps them from having to come down here, and then they don't understand why they can't get what they want if they live in Delhi Township, for instance, for zoning. So did you say, there, at this moment in time, there is there, there's no connectedness to, say, Delhi Township, but is there information to say, oh, you're being bumped out of this particular piece because you live in a jurisdiction that we don't have any authority over? Is that information provided? Or are they left to guess why they're bumped out?
It won't give them the option, and so, again, I'm not in the system maybe as much as Mike. I know currently that you can, if you do a property report, it'll tell you those various things. So if we can get back to the board in regards to that, to let you know, if that's something that we can add, then we will add that, to say, hey, your search doesn't, you know, if you're looking for these things, you would have to go for these elsewhere. So we can add something to that, to say, if you, if you have looked for this item, maybe you're looking for a zoning permit, that option would, is not available with us, and this is, potentially could take you a link. Again, we'll check into that to make sure, you know, that where you can find that information, if it's something that we can do easily, we'll do that as soon as we can. And again, let me get back to you on those options.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I had the same question.
Yeah, I did too, yeah.
And I was thinking about the ability to populate, just when you hit Coleraine or Delhi, a big X will come up and says, you know, we have no authority over there. I would think, I'm not a computer whiz, but Mike is looking, like, I don't know if we can do that or not, but I think that defeats, but...
We can do it. It's just...
You're going to want to come up, come up to the microphone so we can hear you.
We'll get there. I don't think, we're covering our services now. It's a little bit hard to cover everyone's services that we don't directly address. But I've talked to CAGES about it, and we're working on getting that, that kind of information in there.
Because the purpose of all this is efficiency and to make it easier time is money. People are busy, and so if they have to call, call the phone, and then they come down, so, yeah, I think that would be a great...
Just, I think they just understand, this is still, it's such, it's so much better than what we have now. No one knows where they have to go, you know, at all. We get, a lot of what we do is phone calls, like, where do I go first? Who do, where do... Who do, where's the zoning, you know, all that stuff. So the more we get that on the website and we, as we build it and make all that information more clear, it's going to be so much better.
And we thank you.
Yeah, so we have a list of things that we, you know, the system is operational, but improvements that, that we can already see will make it a little better in the customer experience. So we've kind of got a list of those. Maybe it's, you, you know, it's, it's a button which needs to be bigger or it, or it's a, a question that maybe better asked in another area. It's still operational, but the same point, how can we make it better? So we have the ability to post, go live, to, you know, uh, add those to there and we intend to do so. So if it's something we can't do right away, we'll put it on the list and make it better. And that's the whole process. You, you, you evaluate what works and maybe what doesn't, and then, and then make those changes accordingly. So this is, this is good. This is a great thing, you know, from that standpoint, you know, ask the questions, you know? So from that point, you don't, you, you, again, you, you're not going to, you know, sometimes see things in, unless you get into it a little, uh, and so forth. So we'll have other things like that that we'll have to add, but great comments.
Well, it's better than somebody coming all the way down here and being told, oh, you belong in Delhi Township, right? And they are from Delhi Township, that's even worse. So I, I get that. Do you have any?
Yes, I want to first of all say that, um, I want to, uh, thank you all. Uh, this is huge. Kages was a mess, it was antiquated, I feel. And like you said, I mean, it was, you have to go through, you know, thousands of thousands of maps and zones and all these things. And, uh, we're trying to bring ourselves up to, uh, to date. Uh, I would say that if we go to phase two, which is you said you're putting a list together. Phase one, we're launching it, we never had it before, it's online, you can use your smartphone. Um, but as we, uh, do that, we always want to improve. Uh, I already talked about one, making sure it's integrated with the overall county redo of the website. Uh, my other piece would be it, you know, if there's any way, I know it has Hamilton County real small and Cincinnati. I think it's just a Hamilton County, Ohio, we're real big on branding. If there's an easy or whatever's at the top, is there some way it can be Hamilton County in a larger way? Uh, we will already know Cincinnati is in Hamilton County and they would be listed like every other municipality that we would be effective, affecting rather. Um, so that was the other thing. Uh, of course, what was said earlier just now, if there's some pop-up message, I know that if they populate it right, it could pop up. You look for Delhi or whatever, you hit that, it'll, a little pop-up comes and maybe give them a telephone number that, maybe it's not Delhi's number, maybe it's your office number and then they can, that way it could be a pop-up, not just for Delhi, but other ones that we don't, uh, necessarily control. Uh, the other thing is, uh, wanted to find out now, once they go through this process, so we're, we're making it easier for them to apply and do the paperwork, but then what is the turnaround? Is this increasing our turnaround quicker? Is it like turbo? If you do TurboTax, you, you fill these three things out, you're, it has automatic, these go, but these are going to be more difficult. Does the turnaround time change?
I think initially you can imagine we're going to be helping a lot of customers through the process. Eventually it should make it more efficient internally as well for, uh, both, you know, uh, ourselves, uh, in the departments and also for our customers. So we're not routing, uh, planning doc, or plans and so forth. Right now we take a set of plans in, we got to scan those in or put them in, you know, taking a disc and upload those ourselves. There's a backlog of those scans, uh, from that standpoint. So it will make it more efficient to get back to the people that need to get to review it. The review time is still going to be very similar. You know, the amount of time it takes for me to review a plan on paper versus on a screen, it's going to take a similar time. You're looking for those same things, but it's the, it, you know, it, it existing, the plan may go to flood plain to take a look at that first, and then it may get routed to stormwater, it may then get routed to the building side of things. So that part sort of behind the scene stuff will be taken away because it's all digital, it'll go right there automatically and they'll be commenting in, in real time. So it should become more efficient and, and imagine that our team also has to manage this change as well. And so from that point, there will be some time eventually, an intermediate time, yes, I believe it will, you know, create more efficiencies and take down our time. Again, that's the biggest thing with our customers right now, right? Time is money, all right? How soon can we get that? We wanted it yesterday, so, you know, we want to deliver it in an efficient manner and this will help us do that.
Gotcha. Then the rollout, will there be a training that people can sign up for that you guys will be hosting like you kind of just did for, you gave us a quick thing, but I know you said you're going to need time to kind of, what's the rollout, I guess?
So the rollout, uh, again, for our customers, we have online videos for them. They can go through tutorials, uh, from there. Uh, Kages has developed these videos and a succession of videos which helps people through that process. So kind of a step-by-step process, they're kind of, you know, they're not taking themselves too seriously in a technical standpoint because they know their customer from that standpoint is not going to all be a technical person. It's going to be, you know, geared towards likely folks who are doing this for the, you know, very first time in a process so that they've never done a building permit. So again, it is, uh, on that front page, the tutorial processes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you both for being here. Thank you for the tutorial. It's very helpful. It sounds like we've got a little bit more to do, but it is a great step in, in the right direction. So thank you for your efforts and, uh, responding to the needs of the community, really appreciate it.
Just wanted to just use the opportunity to thank James and Mike for just in general all their work. I think I've said this to the board before, so you're well aware of this, but when I first came into the administration back in '06, I mean, I literally was dealing with, uh, building specific issues, um, maybe three or four a month that would pop up. And they were going right to commissioners' offices and the commissioners were coming to the administration saying, hey, um, fix this. Um, developers and builders are saying, uh, the process is taking way too long, I haven't heard back in, in, in months and when I do, um, I submit something, uh, and I wait months to get something back and when I finally do, it's, I got one little thing wrong and they say, submit again, it's going to take a couple more months. Um, and so this, the, the process that, that, and the leadership that James and, and Mike is building commissioner, um, have instituted, uh, that protects the public safety, yet at the same time is responsive to the needs of economic development in the community and balancing that, which is really tough to do. It's a tough job, uh, to balance as to, um, they are doing it extremely well and, uh, making sure, this is really the front door to economic development. When someone comes in and needs something, needs zoning or, or building permits and they're doing it really well. Knock on wood, because they say, haven't gotten to anything coming to my desk in a long time, that'll be the second that something happens, right? But, but it just happened, I mean, that's the nature of the work they're in, but I just want to thank them because they're just doing a really great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And if I may, I don't want to take you to bore your time, but I did want to thank a couple of people. Uh, I won't give the whole list, uh, of, of folks who have worked on this project, but Raj Chunder and his team from Kages, our project manager, Mohammed Islam, uh, our division manager, Brian Snyder, uh, from Development Services, and of course Mike Stalen and his team and Ryan Shoemaker, uh, who's our customer service, uh, supervisor. Those folks and a lot of other people spent a lot of time making sure that this rollout goes smoothly and will continue to do so. So I wanted to, to give a shout out to those guys and, uh, very much a big thank you. Chris Porter is also involved in that and he's also involved in the website as well. So he's a busy man right now. So thank you, that's, uh, all I'll, uh, add to that and appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Oh, and there are some flyers in the back, if anybody wants, they are a flyer about our digital permitting and you can scan the QR code from there.
I did scan the QR code and it does work, so. I just did it while I was sitting up here, I'm like, oh yeah. All right, great, thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Commissioner President?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Uh, I know we're wrapping up, but, um, I, and I know this week we'll have a nighttime meeting, uh, that we're going to have out in Anderson Township. Uh, but I think it's important, uh, the three of us attended a town hall meeting yesterday in Lincoln Heights. And, uh, it was a town hall meeting to deal with the neo Nazis that came to Lincoln Heights, Evendale, in our county, most importantly. And it was shocking to me because just on Thursday, myself and Commissioner Dumas, we had, uh, an incident that happened with, uh, us parking in our spaces and a gentleman that had nothing to do with parking, wasn't trying to park, uh, but had approached, uh, had approached, uh, myself when I was trying to get the cones up so we could park. I gave a speech at that time that the tone in Washington that has opened up the floodgates of this type of emboldened behavior that we didn't want it in Hamilton County. Uh, and that was on Thursday. Then we turned around and on Friday, uh, I had gotten calls from folks in Lincoln Heights that get to the social media, they're here. I said, who's here? They said the neo Nazis are here in Lincoln Heights. And so I contacted Jeff Aludo because normally when we have things that happen, emergencies, usually we get some kind of text or an alert. So I called Jeff Aludo and he indicated he didn't know at the time, but then he found out that that was true and he was going to have Nick Crossley contact me from emergency management. In between that time, I continued to get calls and I started looking at the social media and it didn't look, it did not look good. And so when Nick contacted me, he said, well, they're working on de-escalation. And so eventually I decided to ride on out to Lincoln Heights. I said, I got to get out here. I got to see what's going on, because there were some senior citizens that said they were afraid to come out. Lincoln Heights, the community, uh, came on out. And let me say, I have, uh, a bull, a bullseye on my back on, and so I take these things very seriously because I took on David Duke down at Grambling State University, uh, who was a KKK Grand Wizard running for governor. I came home and was elected to city council and the KKK cross was coming on Fountain Square every time they said we couldn't do this and we couldn't do that. And I found a glitch in the law that said that if they come, they have to pay for the security and the police. We send them a thirteen or twelve thousand dollar bill, but more importantly, they have a newsletter and in the newsletter they have my name and they talk about me sending them a bill. So I take this stuff super serious as everybody does, but I was really concerned because they came to put a stake in the ground in Hamilton County in Lincoln Heights on a bridge to say that this is where they're going to set up shop with this type of tone and behavior. When I got out there and I talked to some of the people, I want to say to Lincoln Heights, they stood up. They had to stand up for themselves. They had to protect their own families. And then all of a sudden I kept hearing now de-escalation. There was no de-escalation talk when the Nazis set up shop uninvited, weren't, they weren't paying taxpaying citizens in Lincoln Heights. And they were okay to set up, but when the community had to fight back at no other choice, we focused on de-escalation. Now, I want to say that I support, and we got a chance to hear a lot of the folks, but I heard them from Friday all the way through. And I understand Jeff indicated that the Nazis came back on Saturday. Now we cannot be the headquarters for that, for the Nazis. And so I was very concerned, uh, when I saw the videos and I heard questions from the citizens, not just at the town hall. I had contacted before the town hall, I contacted mayor, to let her know, Mayor Muffrey, I had been in her community, uh, vice mayor, Linda Chows, Jeters, many calls back and forth, she had contacted me. Uh, Pastor Cook at Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church, talked to him, uh, before he had his march, I couldn't be at the march because I was a keynote speaker at Bethel Baptist Church on that day. Uh, and then I talked to, uh, Reverend, uh, Pifis that contacted me, I got a whole lot of calls. National news has picked this up, Hamilton County, Ohio, and they've said the community stood up, the only community, they've been at other places that stood up. Now, when they went to Columbus, my understanding, people knew they was on their way. When they went to other places, they knew they were on their way. I don't know how we didn't have any intel that they were on their way. We didn't have no intel to elect, uh, to alert the elected officials and have people get ready in the community, they were on their way. The other thing that I saw that was disturbing in these videos, now one of the things I don't like, and I've been through this with the riots and the boycotts and KKK and all this, the first thing we do with African Americans is say, we're going to let them come and vent. This is not a counseling service. We're not here as social workers to listen to them vent, we're here as elected officials to take some action. So I want to get the tone right. We're not here to let, let's open the doors and let them talk. We want some action. Just like we sent that bill to the KKK, you can't come down here no more unless you pay. We want some action. And I just thought it was, uh, kind of disrespectful to a community who is paying taxes to be safe in Hamilton County, where they had to go in their own house, get their own guns, go, go out there and risk their own life, we're not paying for any of their equipment, and they felt as though the only thing that happened was there was a defense in their minds of the Nazis, neo Nazis. There was a press release came out from Evendale, right away, I mean, it came out so fast, I said, man, how did they type so quickly? It was after five o'clock, most people that left, left the office already came out and said, let me just say the, the, uh, neo Nazis was peaceful protesting. The bad people was the citizens whose community was invaded. They didn't say that part, but that's what they insinuated. How can you say it's peaceful and you have not done an investigation? So they have some good questions, who gave the permit? Somebody knew they were coming. Columbus knew they were coming, some other people knew they were coming in their areas. How did we not get the information? We get everything else, we even get the weather and we're not Mother Nature, we know the storm is coming. So that's number one. Number two, the press release, I disagree that they came and was peaceful because the videotape showed otherwise. There's a businessman who testified and I got, he's on tape, his license now has been shown all over the world. The group that came, their official name has the word hate in it. I didn't tell them to name themselves hate, they named themselves hate. In the video, in, in there, Mr. Ruffin talks yesterday and he's also in the video, but I didn't see any officer trying to take his statement. Why did we, why did they not take his statement? You know, usually when something happened, they come with the detectives and want to take an official statement. Has any official statement been taken? Mr. Ruffin is a businessman, been following the law his whole life, but even he has gotten tired. The N-word, it wasn't just the N-word, it's the N-word and the fact you got a gun on your hip. That, and he, he said that the gun was pointed at him. In addition, in the tape, you can hear one of the people with the mask on, neo Nazi, tell a African-American male, your black is going to jail. Now what authority would the, would the masked man have to put somebody in jail? And why would he think he can put somebody in jail? Who is he? That's on the video and people want to know the answer. The other thing you can see on the video is he's saying, the masked man, the neo Nazi that was uninvited said, don't worry guys, they're coming to, they're coming to send an escort for us. What escort is he talking about? But all we saw was after that, a police vehicle leading them out from Evendale. So of course the people going to want to know, did he make the call to them? Most of the time when people are pulled over on the side of the road, they come with three or four jurisdictions, lights are everywhere, they ask for your license and your registration. They run you through a system, that's just for potentially speeding. Potentially speeding. These are the things, Don Juan, who works at the radio station, Radio One, just said, he got stopped downtown by a police officer, just walking from his car to go to his job. And they wanted to find out who he was and he's a, he, he, he's a person working in downtown Cincinnati on the radio. So why would these face people with the mask not be asked? So I just wanted, I didn't want us to go, people to think, now, we were not invited there to speak. We weren't invited to speak, they had their speakers, but I didn't want people to think that because we were there and maybe you didn't hear everything from us, that we, uh, you know, somehow don't have much to say. I got a lot to say, I got a lot of questions, there needs to be an immediate investigation 911 with, I'm, I'm with a report in 14 days, we can't drag this out three months. They came back. How we going to stop them from coming back? How we going to make sure that Lincoln Heights people feel safe? Right now they got their own gun. guns and they are patrolling Lincoln Heights. They're control, patrolling their own community. Now, a lot of times we do this and they say, well, let, you know, it's so-and-so. It's this person, it's that person, it's this person. It's the county, not us as county commissioners because we are elected individually. The sheriff is elected individually. It's not like city hall. We don't hire the chief of police. So we have to definitely work together. But Mr. Aludo, I would like for them to bring all the tapes, answer these questions that the community had, put it in writing. And we have, we cannot come off as the ones defending. It looks that way. Not that we trying, but it looks that way because every time they bring up a question, they say, oh no, they were just peaceful. You bring up, they started it. People was minding their own business on Friday. Minding their own business. So we just can't have that in Hamilton County. We gotta tell them, it's got to be uncomfortable when you come here. It's got to be, you can't come here. We can't make it comfortable. We can't be the place to just lay down and say, this is where you can come. And I know we got statements, but the people, and that's good, but we got to also have some action. So I, I support them in asking for an investigation. Mr. Aludo, I'd like for you to somehow be involved. We got, you sent me to EMA, so EMA needs to be involved, obviously. And then we got to find out body camera footage. We got to hear what it said. We got to look at these tapes that's on social media live, unedited, and answer those questions of why there was no tickets, no arrests, no making them uncomfortable, no getting their information. None of that happened. They came in and was escorted out and then they came back. It can't, they can't be comfortable coming to Hamilton County. So I support the residents in calling for answers and calling for these answers immediate. It's a 911 because the people keep coming back. And we can't be the national place where you can come and bring that kinda stuff and invade our neighborhoods, our communities. And our people could be talked to any kinda way. And you say, well, they can say what they want. But then they start saying something, then here you come talking about, we got to de-escalate. We never escalated. We had to escalate to stop them from escalating. And that's what happened. So just wanted people to know that. I know the other commissioners may have something to say too. They were there. We were all there, but I didn't want to go too many days. Mr. Aludo, this is a 911. I know we got the bingo's lease and I know we got, you know, some other stuff. This is people's lives. This is a 911.
Commissioner Dumas, do you have comments as well?
Sure.
Go ahead. No, go ahead. Yep.
Yeah, I was there last night and packed house. And who could not be appalled at what happened on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We were, commissioners were not scheduled to speak, but as soon as the sheriff gave their information, I raised my hand and I let everybody know I was out of order. But I said, where's Evendale? Evendale police were nowhere around. They are the culprits in all of this. It was a total lack of disrespect to the residents in Lincoln Heights and they need to be called on the carpet. Why are they not there? Did they know ahead, as was mentioned earlier, did they know that all this was going to happen? I thought it was a good meeting. People were able to vent. They needed to be able to vent. I think Cecil Thomas talked about the FBI being involved and all the public safety entities that are being involved. And it's a bigger issue, as was mentioned earlier. When are they coming back? Where, where else are they going? So this is something that touch, should touch everybody's heart. And it's just obvious to me, and I'll bring it up again, why Evendale did not come with their report, with their reasoning behind what they did. Maybe they didn't have any reasons. I don't know. But it was just obvious that they did not respect the people of Lincoln Heights. And I am extremely concerned about that.
Thank you. And I just want to comment quickly before we go to you, Jeff. So I too was at the meeting. I learned about the situation on Friday. I did not know about the situation on Saturday until, until the meeting yesterday. I was surprised to, to learn about that. But on Friday, knowing that there were people with swastika flags between Evendale and Lincoln Heights, spewing hatred for the residents there and everywhere, is something that we just can't tolerate. I mean, it is, it flies in the face of everything we're trying to achieve collectively in this community and in this country. And, you know, we, you know, it's, I heard people say yesterday that while some people found it to be shocking, other people did not find it to be shocking. And that's the sad part, that some people feel like they are constantly in this space where they have to be on the defense or on the lookout or, because there are people that just hate them because of who they are and what they look like. And it is, it's, it really breaks you. And so I, I agree with the comments that have been made. I wonder, as the county commissioners, as you say, we are not law enforcement. We, we do not have authority in some of these areas. However, we can bring folks in and ask questions. And so I wonder, I have, the sheriff was there yesterday answering some questions about the response. And so I heard her say she's gonna set up a task force. I heard her say that she's got some action steps that they talked about in investigation. So I'm wondering if we, it would be helpful, if we thought it would be helpful to bring the sheriff in. This Thursday, as was stated, is an evening meeting in Anderson Township. So that's probably not the best time, but maybe the following week and bring her in and get an update as to what's going on, as to what she's doing, so that we are in the loop and folks in the community have an understanding of, and I know she can do it. She's duly elected, right? We're not her bosses. And I'm sure she will be doing some of this herself. But I do feel like we need to have this conversation at this level, right?
I think we need to, go ahead.
Well, and I, well, Jeff.
Yeah, Evendale, why are we not wanting to bring Evendale into the mix?
Well, I'm not saying that so much as, yeah, the sheriff is part of the county structure. So I just thought that would be the obvious.
She made it clear about her lack of jurisdiction. It's home rule. Evendale is home rule. She's the, the lead for public safety in the whole county. But she made it clear that Evendale is leading this investiga, we can't keep ignoring, not that we are, Evendale. I want to hear from them.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah. Jeff?
I just want to add to that is that when we deal with, we just had EMA come in talking about multi-jurisdictional. And, and I would like to find out because there are a lot of different jurisdictions. And I know that when you give a ticket, for example, you know, the county can give a, but they can give a ticket anywhere in the county. They can deal with crime anywhere in the county. I don't want to X out Evendale. I think we need to find that out. And then I want to know legally, I know we could come, we're just, you know, we're county commissioners, we have our thing. Is it, I want to find out. We need the prosecutor's office involved. It's not just, you know, we, you know, sending, we gotta have others that we send it off. But what can we ask for as a, as a thing? You know, can we put something down? Can we send something to Evendale to get the tapes and all that stuff? We, we have to look at all options that, you know, what do we have legally as an option? Because, you know, honestly, the people are feeling, I mean, I mean, the bottom line is they're out there with their own guns and they're on the corners and they are manning the safety of their own jurisdiction and it's in our county. That's a problem that they got to do that. And they talked about the kids and the students and people are scared. I mean, it's, it's, and you don't know if they're coming back. So yeah, we gotta get to the bottom, but it has to be all hands on deck. And I know, like you said, we can't, you know, we're independently elected. So we can't tell the sheriff what to do. And I'm not trying to tell them what to do. But what I am trying to say is that we all want the whole county to be safe. And I don't know who it is. Somebody said it was Evendale. Somebody said they had stuff over in Lachlan. I mean, that's why we the county. We, we don't have, we don't have these lines of, oh, it was just this community and that community. So I'd like to know from the prosecutor's office. I mean, do we got to come in? What do we gotta do to make sure? I want to get to the bottom. I want to know why that guy with a mask on said he gonna take that man to jail. Wow. What authority does he have to take somebody to jail? I want to know about this U-Haul truck that they said people got in, in the back of a U-Haul truck. Now they come back, you know, it shouldn't be, and we, here we are saying, well, you know, if you over 16, you can get in. That's not normal to be in that U-Haul truck like that. And then the U-Haul truck, they said, ended up over in the marathon by, by, in, in Lachlan. And then Lachlan came out and said, wait a minute, we didn't have none. So we got to have somebody, multi-jurisdictional. And even though the sheriffs were there to talk about their patrolling of Lincoln Heights, they patrolled the whole county. And so I don't want to put, I don't know where the blame needs to be. All I know is the videos are out. And the people saw what they saw. They heard what they heard. And I got a few of the videos I was able to clip real quick. And if you need to see them, you, you can see them. But you cannot tell me you could put a gun to any individual's window, according to what he said, and you say that, oh, that was a peaceful protest. It's nothing we can do. We got to put our hands up. So that's where the people are, and these people, they not dumb. They've been around in the 60s when they had to fight this stuff. So that's what I wanted to put. I don't know who it is, but we need to have some, I know the sheriff's got a task force. And if her task force is only going as far as the patrols at Lincoln Heights, we need something else that pulls in, like you said, even.
Well, and let's not forget about Lincoln Heights, right? So this coordinated effort where we, right, 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 with Lincoln Heights, Evendale. So I just threw out the sheriff because I know she had some action steps that she identified.
Oh, no, 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 that was.
Bring her in. So Jeff, help us think through a coordinated.
Yeah, no, well, I appreciate that. I don't know, have a huge amount to add, commissioners, other than just to say that I think the questions that you're all raising are very, very good questions, the questions we should be asking right now. I had been talking with the, with EMA and with the sheriff's office, talked with sheriff, folks and sheriff's leadership this morning about steps they are taking to do after-action reviews on this, investigations, et cetera. I think you've all raised a very good question about who's the appropriate entity to do that, especially given the fact that the, the several entities that you've mentioned all have patrol authority in certain of these communities, Evendale, Lachlan, the sheriff and Lincoln Heights. So is there another entity that is better suited to do that? I know the sheriff's office is working through that question right now. So as soon as I, and I will coordinate with them today and get back with, with the board on best way to approach this. I'll work with the prosecutor's office as well. But I do think that the board and the community needs some answers to all of these questions. And I'm happy to, on the board's behalf, serve as the lead in helping to coordinate that. Do you just want to raise one thing? We, we talked about the incident on Friday and then I want to be clear that, and as I talked with the board, I was made aware through a report that I had received that there were protesters that had come back on Saturday because there was drone footage of people, of people in black camo with firearms on the 75 overpass with signs posted. I learned as of, right before this meeting, that it is uncertain whether that was the group or community members, you know, defending that, that community. So I'm not 100% certain what group that was, but I'm looking into that as well, Commissioner, because I know we'd had that conversation yesterday. That's what I had told you. And it was based upon a report that I had received. So, but we'll go back and figure that out as well as who, who was in, who was where, when. But I'm happy to continue to investigate this on behalf of the board and meet with you individually. If there's specific questions that you would like me to follow up on directly, I'll absolutely do that and coordinate it and report back to the board on it.
Can I just, oh, go, go ahead. I was just gonna say, as far as Evendale, they have never really been good neighbors to Lincoln Heights. So that was their opportunity, one opportunity to come last night and speak and say that we respect you and we care about you. I also know we give lots of money to Evendale, lots of money to Evendale. They need to be responsible, not only to Lincoln Heights, but to us and let us know what's going on.
Commissioner, I just wanted to say, when we have a, can we have a document, not just, we got questions, we need a document of questions so that if, I would know if you added some questions, Commissioner Dumas asked some questions, I, we have one document that we can, and then maybe, you know, maybe Lincoln Heights, stuff we heard last night, add those questions so that we have a document that everybody, citizens, and let me just say, it wasn't just Lincoln Heights that was ticked off. It's a lot of people in Hamilton County that's ticked off, diverse people that's ticked off about what happened. But I agree with you. You can't come over here one way and want to say, let's work together. And then on the other way, you know, we asking you what happened and now nobody, you know, now all of a sudden you, you say you home rule and you can't, you ain't got the answer to nobody. You know, we've got to tie the two. You see, they're doing that in Washington. Donald Trump is tying his policies to whether you gonna get some funding. And so we gotta make sure that we're not funding something that is putting one community against the other. We should all be appalled. We should tell them to hit the road, Jack, and don't you come back no more, not to Hamilton County. But we can't be the place that's welcoming. We've got to be unwelcoming to that type of behavior. So I think we all agree on that.
And so it says some follow-up steps there, Jeff, and then.
And I like the idea of pulling together, make sure we know precisely what the board's questions are. We can circulate a document so that we're all on the same page as to what we, what questions we are trying to get answered in totality.
And some kind of report out, maybe next week, kind of a status report, because there's a lot going on. It's, it happened very quickly. We need a status report. So, okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.